Can't pop it.
Cheryl, Cheryl, good night.
We'll start the workshop session. Start the workshop session and ask for this call roll. Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Here.
Patterson.
Here.
Richardson.
Here.
Aaron Scott.
Here.
Bill Scott.
Here.
Wonkel.
Here.
Wormowski.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Mayor Azur.
Here.
City Attorney here.
Here.
Thank you. The first item under the workshop is under the marriage report to discuss donation to the Jacksonville Promise. Dr. Sheik is here. If you have any questions, he was like, Lynn, we touched on this when he was here about a month ago, and we discussed, we can just talk a little bit about it two weeks ago, and there was some discussion on something. He's requesting 10,000 because he wants to match a Tracy Foundation match that he needs to know about. You know, there's we laid out a scenario five, 10, last two weeks ago, we discussed, I don't know who brought it up, that we give the CEO program, which is similar to this, not quite to the level of the promise, but we give them a donation each year of a thousand and something of the ultimate. Thought that might be appropriate, but you've had a couple of weeks to digest this, so he's here if you have any questions.
What do we give United West, do you know?
We can give them a place to housing in kind. We have a give them office space down there.
Police.
Yeah, they're very, yeah.
Don't hit the end.
I guess one question I, is this a one-time request, or is this going to be every year you come back and go and ask for more money?
Well, I can't guarantee I won't ever ask you for more money, but right now this is a one-time request. And one, one piece of information that came to my, that came to me within the last week that I didn't answer for you last time, I had mentioned in the previous email to everybody that the Rockford Promise had had a study done by Northern Illinois Business School that showed a high return on investment. And hopefully, everybody got an email from me a couple of days ago. I actually obtained a copy of that from the Rockford Promise, mailed that out to everybody. It was an unbelievable return on investment that the Northern Illinois Business Group said that a community gets when they invest in a promise. And so I hoped to convince everybody that, that a donation to the promise, especially at a time when you're going to be able to double your money with a, with a matching grant from the Tracy Foundation, will give you a return on investment, return of those dollars that's, that's very substantial, so.
I think what you do is a good thing. I just have a hard time taking city money and giving because you start here, and then who's going to be next, and who's going to be next, and who's going to be next? Because who's going to keep wanting funding from the city because they come up with eight scholarship? Tech school or beauty school or whatever it may be, or we're going to continue to give money to everybody that comes up with something that they call a scholarship. I also, you know, looking at being the money, this also goes towards the private colleges too, they use Mac and Columbia, and I understand on that level too, which I would rather it stay just with the state schools, that level of the state money. State money, that level, but I just, I don't know. I keep looking at it, I keep reading it, but at this moment, I cannot support it. So you give me money towards it.
I don't have a problem with taking it out of gambling money.
If we can, we use gambling money for that.
Yep. It's up to us. If it's a one-time shot.
But you can't guarantee it's going to be a one-time shot.
We don't have.
One hundred and ten back and ask.
We talked last week about it being just general funding, just like the Morton County CEO. Morton County CEO wanted, as far as I know, general funding. And when we did that, we didn't ask if that was a one-time shot or if it was going to be every year either.
I think a thousand dollars.
I think that was a three-year thing.
Three years.
I know that for the private companies, that's what it was. It was a three-year commitment.
I feel like for the past six months, we've been approached quite a few times from different nonprofit organizations, organizations asking for money. It might be something where we sit back and we establish some type of criteria on if it's going to benefit the whole community, or, you know, how, how, how much money do we designate in the budget annually? Or what are some criteria that we want to do? I feel like that would maybe help provide some structure and guidelines from people from the outside who are willing to approach us as a council, and it would help provide us some, you know, some guidance on, on how we want to address these type of things. Because we have lots of worthy, worthy causes in the community, and of course, you know, individually, we want to support them all. But we're talking about setting money. I think it gets a lot more complicated.
But what better investment is your, than your kids?
They're homeless, and we wouldn't give them money when they needed it last month.
I know she didn't ask for any, but I'd give $5,000 toward that young lady that does the lunches for the community. Doorbell, the one that does the sack lunch.
Feed the kids in the summer.
The kids in the summer.
Vanessa, who used to do it.
Yeah, I just, you know, like I said, I looked at it, I read that, I read the Rockford Report. I've read, a lot of those are generic things that benefit less crime, less, I mean, who's to say that's really going to be part of it? I understand getting education, and hopefully, there's going to be less crime. But, you know, there were things in there to me that were just very generic. If you give money to support this, this is the benefit you're going to get. I just, like I said, I can't go back. I can't seek the city money for it.
Any amount?
I would say no, but it seems like the council's already given money to other things.
I was wondering, the Tracy Foundation, if, if the city was to say, we'll give a thousand dollars a year for 10 years, would the Tracy Foundation still give you 10,000 dollars?
We expect to get matching grants every year from the Tracy Foundation, so generally, at about this time of the year, if there was a donation, we'd probably get matched. We expect that, I mean, this will be our second, this is our second year of getting money from the Tracy Foundation. Last year, they gave us $10,000. This year, they've given us $30,000, 10 for matching from individuals, 10 for matching from corporations, and 10 as a grant for our overhead expenses. They are looking to us at the moment as kind of a pilot program for a promise program they're starting in ground time. So they're enthusiastic about what we're doing over here and what lessons we're learning. I think in answer to some of the questions about whether or not donations to other charitable things going on in Jacksonville is comparable, and whether it should be considered, I think that the promise is somewhat unique in terms of the fact that it creates an economic engine for Jacksonville. That when you have, when you are reducing the cost of the education for children in this community, you create an environment where people from the surrounding area that aren't in District 117 will want to get into the district in order to, to earn that benefit for their children. This year, we're giving 30 scholarships valued at $2,500. When you create that kind of incentive for people to live in the community and to move into the community, it creates an economic engine, but then, that other charitable ventures, I mean, when you give money to the food pantry or whatever, that doesn't entice people to come into the area. So you have to look at, at what you are giving your money to, what kind of nonprofit are you giving it to? And is it something that's going to entice people to come into the area? That's part of why the Rockford Study by Northern shows that you actually get a positive return on investment. It's in terms of how are you keeping people in the area, so.
Is the Economic Development Board getting anything?
Is, I'm sorry, is who?
Regional Economic Development, Jacksonville Regional Economic Development.
They haven't told me yet. I sent them an email and asked them to give me something, but I haven't heard yet.
Any other contributors?
This, next week, but I haven't heard about it before.
Any other contributors?
I'm sorry.
Any other contributors?
Any other contributors? Well, last year, Jacksonville Savings Bank gave us $5,000, and I have a request into them to try to do something for us this year, but I haven't heard. I've got about $1,000 so far in corporate contributions. And we have a deadline of July 1st, and I've asked the Tracy Foundation to extend that for us because I don't think it makes quite possible I won't get the $10,000 by July 1st.
As a part of, if you got to seven, will they match the seven, or do you have to hit the $10,000 level?
No, no, no. If we get to seven, they'll match the seven, sure.
So anything that the city would agree to?
That's good.
Wouldn't be matched.
Absolutely.
I agree with what everyone else has said, so I don't necessarily believe this is the best use of government money. However, I think the city should start the engine for the $10,000, so I would support a nominal amount of money maybe get into this of like $1,000. Not that I don't think the program's great. I think it's a great program. I don't like if I'll use a taxpayer money for it. However, I would vote yes and support the $1,000.
I think Lori has a valid point that we need to, you know, set some criteria for the future request of funding of this sort and everything. And I agree with you. I think $1,000, I'm for $1,000.
I'd like to say this with Rockford, and when Morrissey was, was the mayor, he really put a lot of attention in the city as far as the city being combined with the school district and, as well as truancy and, and a whole lot of programs to make it a holistic thing where the city and everybody, all shareholders were involved in order to make all these changes that you're talking about that Northern has actually done. Because a number of years ago, I did some study, matter of fact, and talked to Rockford about the things they were doing. But it has to be a buy-in from everybody in order to make those changes that you're talking about, in order to start seeing a, a return on investment. Because if it has a big gaping hole, and it doesn't seem like it works, but it just so happens that they were having so many issues with truancy and trying to get business to come to town and, and trying to get a culture of education so that businesses, as we talk about, that businesses would, would start coming to Rockford, then everybody had to be in a buy-in, because they were in a kind of dire situation, and, and now they have seen growth. But again, I would say that what you're talking about this $1,000, I, I really don't have a problem with it. Only thing I'm saying is, if we're going to get into the middle of this, we have to buy into it and, and be a shareholder in some way. We have to figure out how we're going to do that. Otherwise, we're allowing something that we wish would happen die on the vine. And so I'm not sure how we're going to actually go about that, because I belong to some organizations that everybody came to money, and we had to say, whoa, 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 whoa. But what we did was, we started giving money to another central place that distributed, so we didn't have to deal with that. So I'm not sure how we're going to go about it, but I'm only saying this, council members, is if this is the direction that we're going to in Jacksonville, going in Jacksonville, we have to have a buy-in in some, somewhat to support something rather than kind of having programs around us that everyone ended up dying on a vine. Especially if we're looking at bringing business to Jacksonville, the culture of young people in our, in our city. So that's all I have to say about that. But $1,000, I'm, I'm good with it, but as a city, I think we need to really seriously start thinking about what the buy-ins are, because that's what happened in Rockford. That's even more successful.
That's a really good point, and I would, probably what Alderman Patterson said before, what is the JREDC doing? We would do that through the JREDC, have them make good decisions on what, what would be the best economic for that.
I'm good.
With the students that you provided scholarships to in the past, have all of them continued, do they, is it perpetual? They get the $2,500 every year, or do you offer to new students?
Well, our bylaws say that we're going to give each student $6,000 every year.
Okay.
For four years. And, and of course, in our first year of operation, we didn't raise enough money to do that.
Sure.
So in our first year of operation, we gave each student $2,000 for the first year. And, and only if they had gone to school all K through 12. And in our second year, we, we gave, we gave $2,000 if they'd gone 3 through 12. First year, we gave 17 scholarships. The second year, we gave 19 scholarships. This year, we're going to be giving out 30 scholarships, and it's, and it will be, if they've gone 9 through 12 or more. But again, it's just for the first year. And we're going to have to work our way up. It's going to take a lot of money to get this program up to a full-fledged promise program. But, you know, the first year, we raised 40,000. The second year, we raised 60,000, then this year, I think we're going to break 100,000. And we're going to give 75,000 away in scholarships. So we're, we're gathering momentum, trying to, I'm trying to infect everybody with the virus that I have, and.
So, so my question would be, perhaps even next year, or as you began to look back every year over year, so the students, the first-year students that receive the funding, do they stay enrolled at those institutions? Are they still there, and will they graduate next year? I mean, that would be, that would be some important data.
These are metrics that we have listed in our five-year plan to measure, and of course, it's too soon to gather those metrics.
Right. And we already know how many of those students actually then found employment locally.
Right.
Because.
So all I can tell you is that nationally, if you look at students that go to school, 80% of students that graduate from a college will stay within 100 miles of that college. Now, what that translates to for Jacksonville, I don't know, you know. Saying that 80% of our students here will stay within 100 miles of Jacksonville, you can increase that. You can make that a much more quadratic curve if you establish internships in Jacksonville. People who are in college start to look for work, and if they have internships in the town, this has to mesh with your JREDC in order to develop a plan that keeps your brain trust locally, but these, these are all things that will have to be.
Right. And having worked in higher education, I certainly think that the Jacksonville community is a phenomenal job of opening their doors and their resources to our local institutions. So, I mean, I think that platform's been established. I'm curious, and you won't have that data for two years, but I think it's imperative to know how many continued on these institutions and then actually found.
Right.
Employment here to contribute back to, to the.
Out of the first 36 students, we've had a couple that have dropped out after the first semester because they couldn't cut it. But, but I think by and large, it's over 90% of state of college, so.
We'll build the curve.
Sure.
We're collecting the numbers, so when we can't put it all together in a couple more years, we will. We keep in touch with the students, all the students, pretty much every year. How are you doing? How are you doing? What's going on? Where are you at this point in your life? So we're trying to not just be a one-shot injection for them, excuse the medical terms here, but just to let them know that they're supported throughout their college career.
Mayor, I think we need to, I think others are watching us, and I think we need to lead by an example. So I think we need to give it to.
Well, under the marriage report in the regular meeting, there will be motions to approve a donation. Somebody's going to have to make that motion seconded on a dollar amount, so.
What are you going to recommend?
Yeah.
Well, I think more than 1,000, and he's asking 10,000, so we'll just be in the middle of 5.
Not too much. $1,000 is all I will vote for.
I'm not saying take it out of taxpayers' money. I said take it out of the gambling money, not taxpayers' money. Sure, if the Bank of Jacksonville can give $5,000, we can too. We give $25,000 to Main Street.
Not out of the gambling fund, we do it out of the general fund.
Out of the general fund, that's right.
Right.
But that's taxpayers' money.
It is.
I just think we need to.
Or that we need to discuss.
Dip our tail in the water this year, and then we'll, maybe next year, discuss something different.
This is, this is the second time it's come to the council. I remember Mr. Cody coming before and then asking for money before, and we didn't do anything then. Of course, they were asking for more, right?
They were asking for sales tax.
They were asking for more.
Well, it's on the, it's on the agenda stuff.
If you want to do 1,000, let's do 1,000. At least that's a start.
Okay, committee reports planning in public corpus. Alderman Scott.
We have four items. First one is discuss waiving bids and second proposal for the demolition of the bridge on Brooklyn Avenue. And I think Les has done that, got two bids, a little bit hanging in at $12,000 from K Vass, correct? Yes. And Roland's was the next lowest bid. Any questions on that?
Is $12,000 in line with what we've done in the past, or for some of the projects?
I don't think we ripped that one to the name.
That's where we ripped that one down there on Feds.
Yeah.
Rip it.
How about like in the regions? I mean, we only went with local contractors. Maybe someone in the region has more experience can do it for us.
I don't know. Ask for a proposal, and that's what we got. We do it usually on house demolition on a regular basis.
Sounds cheap, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's cheap. And I know Les talked about they're going to leave the rock on the sides. Let's keep our money at local, too. Yeah, here's a little one. I'm just going to ask a question as you just kind of said, and I don't understand what you did. Steve, what's the difference between proposal and putting it out for bid?
With the proposal, you select whatever contractors you want to submit a proposal. You don't advertise in the newspaper for that. You have the right to accept or reject all proposals. You can take a proposal that's higher than the lowest, if you want. Anything along those lines where you waive bids and accept a proposal requires a two-thirds majority of the council to vote for it. With a bid, you actually go out and prepare typically prepare bid specifications, advertise for bids, and you are required then, if you accept a bid, to take the lowest responsible responsive bidder, subject only to the little qualification we have. If it's local, there's a certain percentage that we can take into account. But with the proposals, typically, we avoid the cost of preparing specifications and advertising for bids prior to accepting one.
I support. Don said too, I like to keep it local.
In my day, we always tried for three bids, and you can't always get three bids.
And I assume they're going to haul this away, right? It just says demolition.
Yeah. If there's any concrete without rebar in it, they're going to rip wrap the bank, just very little of it. Yeah. The rest is going to be hollowed out. The steel structure definitely goes. It's really a safety hazard for pedestrians or people. They shouldn't be walking on anyway. But if it does end up falling into the brook and we get rain, we're going to have bigger problems than that.
Any other questions? Not, we'll move on to number two. Discuss waiving bids and accepting proposal for demolition of property located at 1135 Allen Avenue. I thought that'd be Kelly.
I can handle that. We.
It's a little house.
It's a small house. Typically, we see proposals from area contractors. This time, we got two responses. The low was from AG Drainage, $4,000. The next one we received was for $5,750.
It must be a little house.
It is. 1135 Allen Avenue. It's a smaller.
Any questions? Okay, number three is discuss request to rezone property located at 851 Grove Street from R5 to R1. I'll hand that to Dan.
I'll take this one and the next one. At the plan commission, this request for rezoning, going from an R5, went by family house on Grove Street, down to an R1, the owners are in the process of doing some work on it. It used to belong to Dean Eldred from ICA. At one time, it may have had a second apartment in it. They would prefer that it, they convert it back to single-family. I don't think they intend to live there, but just get it back to single-family. And if there are no questions on that one, I'll address the second one. Property at 910 South Clay. This property is in R3 District, a one-family dwelling district. It's, proposal was to amend it to R5 to allow three apartments there. There was opposition to this proposal. Joining neighbors pointed out that there's been issues with parking already in the past with complaints. At one time, it was single families. At some point, it was converted to two apartments. But most recently, I think it was back to single-family. And the plan commission unanimously recommended that you deny this petition. Some of the area people are here.
Actually, the house was never rezoned for.
It was never rezoned for apartments. That's correct.
They never got to rezon.
It was always R3. So when this one comes up, while the, it'll be read as amending to approve R3, your vote, if you wish to follow the plan commission recommendation, is just voting up on this one.
Also trying to figure out the wording on that, because I kept saying they would be hereby fined as they have against Daniel and Ashley, or hereby granted their petition.
Yeah, and so you want to vote, if you do, if you want to file a plan commission, you will know.
All right. I was trying to figure out, break up reading.
Thanks, Dan.
Do we usually get canned or are we voted down by the commission?
Yes, the, the plan commission simply makes a recommendation. If they vote, as they did in this case, to deny it, you have, you're the group that has to either approve or deny the rezoning. But quite often, when someone is, does not get the recommendation of the plan commission, they withdraw their petition, so it never reaches the council. This petition has not been withdrawn, so we do need to take action on it. Any questions on either one of those results?
Put it out for me?
Yeah.
Can't read those legal papers.
They're designed to be like that. If you need a score, you can read them.
No.
Whereas.
Whereas, whereas.
Paid by the whereas.
Okay, next item is public protection. Alderman Williams.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one, and that's discuss authorizing agreement with the Illinois Law Enforcement Alarm System to host Illinois Transportation Emergency Communication System equipment, and Robert Field.
So I was approached by my AEMA region director and the director of AEMA to see if we would be willing to entertain the option of hosting this device. This is a common thing in Illinois where state assets are strung out across the state and co-hosted by local agencies, so we can use it as we wish. And then if deployed, then we have to get it there, and then the state takes over, manning the system once it's there. This is a communication support unit. Obviously, you know, you all know where I came from, so it's part of the reason why we were selected. But however, it also will be used regionally with staff from region. So there's no staffing issues upon my department that will have to, to load on it. It's, that's why they kind of selected us, because I was like, hey, I can't do this by myself. We want to use this as a region. We want to bring in partners from other counties to help support the unit. And it helps us support our interoperability challenges. If we have a disaster, if we have an event, for example, if we lost Farmer State Bank, that's the hitch pin to the show here in town, to say the least. And this unit could fix that. I don't have to go anywhere to get it. It'll be right here for us to use. There's the capital equipment in it. We are not responsible for maintaining, replacing, or anything such as that. General maintenance, licensing, insurance, things such as that, for the vehicle, the tow vehicle of it, yes, we are responsible for that. I don't think that is going to be a significant cost to us, but all this stuff that costs a lot of money, we are not responsible for replacing that, which is really important, because we can't afford to do that. It's, that stuff changes fast. It also brings this, okay, I'm not going to waste your time, but it brings us less technology in the case that we lose our internet, we lose our phones. It has satellite phones. It's got additional resources that are right here, and we take priority. That, so if we have a disaster, and Springfield has a disaster, sorry, Charlie, we house it year-round. And if we need it, it stays here with us.
Where would this be housed at?
I'm going to beg the mayor for some of that prime property out of the water treatment plant.
Now, when it has to be transported somewhere, are you responsible for getting it there?
I'm responsible for getting it there, or my team would be responsible to get it there.
We would be transporting it, hauling it. Is this a trailer or is it an RV?
It's a truck and trailer that comes.
Trucking and trailer.
It used to be at Springfield, City of Springfield hosted it, and they turned. It used to be at Springfield City, Springfield hosted it, and they turned it back. The employee that turned it back didn't especially get approval to turn it back. Um, didn't go very well, but they took it back and said, we're gonna redeploy it somewhere else. It's in great shape, I've seen it, it's the best shape of any of them in the state. Some of them are a little rough up in Chicago, and this one is in great shape.
So this is a truck and a trailer?
Truck and a trailer, it comes as a full...
So we don't have to...
Device, I tried to only get the trailer, because I already have a truck, and they're like, nope, they're gonna get it, thanks for asking.
Well, Phil, why would, if this is such a benefit, why would any person wanna turn it back?
I don't know, I can't really speak the politics that happened in Springfield.
'Cause I'm trying to figure out what is the, what is... Be given something without cost to a certain degree?
I understand, there's, there's obviously something that happened over there.
Yes, yes.
And there's been some strategic repositioning of assets too, that's went on in the state, and it may have been part of that too, but... I don't know what all the politics are in Springfield. Well, I do know some of them, but...
You can figure that out.
So insurance wise, this is all under our blanket policy?
I would imagine, yeah.
I would imagine so.
I'm sure they're on the hook for a lot of them, but...
Yeah, I'll definitely need, I need to confirm all that with Steve, and make sure it's insured appropriately.
And it'll be in a secure area, I mean, our water plant, I don't know what you have to secure, the security policy for, if you're gonna re-enter the bike, so you bike up to your vehicle, I would imagine.
Any other questions?
No, I have a good idea. Thanks, Phil.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Uh, utility, Alderman Walsh.
Just one item, Mr. Mayor, uh, discuss engineering agreement for East State Street Water Main replacement project. Mr. Park?
As everyone's word, we received, uh, ITEP funding through the Department of Transportation for the East State Street project, uh, Streetscape project. Jack has asked that, as part of that project, we go ahead and install a new water main, much like we've done around the square and up and down the north main and south main. Uh, would also be putting new, um, services, four-inch services into each building to help with, um, sprinkler systems for residential or commercial development, potentially downtown. That's something, again, we've done both on the north, the south main and around the square. Uh, this would be for the section running from the square down to probably around the KCs, it's not where I think we'll end up going to. And then, uh, some loop lines, and then all the new services, and permitting, construction observation.
Seems like every time you write a grant, you get it, good job.
Know somebody. Who knows how to write a grant?
Do good work.
We have a couple guys.
I know, it must be like this.